So it's seven o'clock. We have one more member coming. He's on his way and it's okay that we open up with just the three of us. So our first order of business is the minutes from February 12th, which we've all read. Here he is as announced, you see. So do we have a motion about the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 12th.
Hold in favor? All right.
Aye.
Okay, done. And you had, yeah, you had the minutes, good. So our first case tonight is...
The microphone?
Oh, yeah. And maybe to your advantage. So our first case tonight is, wow, 215 to 217 Orchard Street. Do we have any documents on this? There's nothing on the boards, right?
Oh, no, I didn't bring, they, no, I didn't bring.
So please identify yourself and tell us what you have in mind.
Good evening. My name is Sadar Jajan. I'm the owner of 215 to 217 Orchard Street. I have, I am building one story in addition usage for a storage or mudroom area. I have met all the requirement of the zoning board as a, for the space. But I have the setback also requirement that as I'm not meeting of the old grandfathered setback. So my property was 12 and a half feet. Now I'm going into like a seven feet further. I decided to cover like over concrete, grandfathered concrete space. This entrance use storage for the house improvement for our building.
Do you have a little staff report?
I am.
Are you?
I'm just requesting that that you can hear that.
Yes, I can give you a brief staff report. The, the project was triggered by a code enforcement case with, you know, construction without a building permit. And so it was during one of those, one of the enforcement officers driving around Watertown, he saw construction occurring and identified that. And there was a stop work order put on the, on the property and they were required to apply for a permit. They submitted materials for special permit finding as was identified. The site is not directly on Orchard Street and so it's, but it has no access from the private road that's adjacent to it. So it was built, most likely it was built as the first house on the block. And then there's a house in front of it with an access point. So from a zoning perspective, its front lot line is the rear, adjacent to the rear lot line of the property in front of it. And its rear property line would appear as a side property line to the adjacent neighbor on the adjacent terrace. And so when staff looked at it from that perspective, the, you know, ideally there would be a retention of the existing approximately 12-foot setback. But staff recommended that this is, although it's reducing the rear yard setback by several feet, it is still not a substantially more detrimental condition than the existing condition to the neighborhood as a whole. And staff recommends conditional approval of the quote unquote rear addition, which also appears as a side addition of the house. That's the staff's report. It's fairly brief. There are conditions which are standard, including as-built for the proposed slash partially-built structure. And obviously a building permit requirements.
So just to clarify, it goes from 12, 12 feet, four inches to seven foot five?
Yeah, that's correct. The skew of the property line at that point because it turns into a cul-de-sac. So that, that rear property line angles and so it's, it's reduced.
Do we think at one time this was all one property?
Based on our permit search, all I looked at was the age of this house and it was the oldest house. So I would assume that at least the property in front of it in this house were one time combined. But it could have included more properties, but I didn't go into that detail search of prior to, you know, the original construction of the house. And the house was built in about 1920. So it was built substantially prior to our zoning code being in place.
So questions on the board?
I just, getting it on the zoning table that's in the application, the floor area ratios are quite high, 46. Did you guys check that?
I didn't.
Maybe the zoning table just may need to be looked at before we go to the zoning board of appeals. Just, there were a couple other things that were some existing proposed questions in there, like the front yard setback being 51 feet proposed, but the existing's 19.5.
I typically, I have to be honest, the, the table is what they submit to us and oftentimes the numbers aren't right. Or, and they are not what is being requested, but I, I didn't see the FAR. Let me just relook at the legal to see if we spoke to the... Does it say 51 or .51 for the FAR?
The FAR says 46.8 and 44.9. Something was amiss there.
We can look at the FAR prior to the zoning board to make sure that the relief is requested properly.
No, it looks like really this was way before zoning and what's grandfathered seems to be appropriate.
No comment, sorry, no questions, just, I mean, I suppose when there's a stop work order and we get an application like this for basically permission after the fact, there's really no ramifications for the petitioner for having taken that chance, whether by design or ignorance?
The only ramifications are in regard to the building permits where they're doubled.
They're double, yep.
Yeah, so that's a building, if you, if you start working on something prior to getting a building permit, my understanding is that they're, and again, that's not my office, but my understanding is that when they've done that, if they're allowed to do it.
The cost for the permit is doubled?
Mm-hmm. And then the other ramification is if, if you wanted to change anything, and then also because there was no building permit, if, if this is, if it's determined that it's not to code, the pieces that are not to code need to be updated.
So was it, there actually was a stop work order?
There was a zoning compliance. So I guess because there's not an actual building permit, I'm not sure if I used the right terminology when I said stop. It's a stop work order from zoning perspective. Like they can't continue work. They need to resolve the issue. They can't just apply for a building permit.
That there was no building permit pulled in the first place at all?
That's correct.
So...
It's outside of the purview of this board, but I mean that.
So it looked to me like it was pretty much finished.
It's not. Still, we have some work done on siding and, you know, it's, well, it stopped where, where we are. We, we got a stipend that the stop work and we did stop work.
Other questions from the audience? If not, we're ready for a recommendation, I believe.
Okay. I move that the planning board recommend conditional approval to the zoning board of appeals of the special permit finding under section 4.06A for the addition in the setbacks as it meets the criteria set forth in the Watertown zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor? All right. Opposed? Okay. So you go to the zoning board, I think, in two weeks. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
So, moving right along. Our next order of business is 735 Mount Auburn Street.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Ken Lightner representing the petitioner, Kelly Land Trust Inc., which is the owner of 735 Mount Auburn Street. 735 Mount Auburn Street is an existing auto mechanic's garage. Lot's about 6,500 square feet and it's been a mechanic's garage for quite some time. And what we're proposing to do is change the use from that of a mechanic's garage to that of the office for Kelly Brothers Landscaping, together with the commercial parking of their vehicles on site and so they can continue their business operations. The, what we're requesting is a special permit finding on a 4.06A and E for a change in use that is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the present use there. I have spelled out in the application itself how it's going to, how they propose it's going to work. They are going to pick up their trucks in the morning and put their employees' vehicles there, to the extent that the employees have vehicles, and leave for the day. And then in the evening, they're going to come back and park their trucks. And the employees are going to leave the site in their vehicles. So there were two points during the day that's going to use, access the site. It's going to be an office inside for the, for their regular work with one to two employees. And there's, and the doors are going to be closed. They maintain their small machinery, lawn mowers, the grass trimmers by changing oil. And I put in the petition about every three weeks on site. So I also, and I had presented it to, I don't know if it's in your packet. We did take pictures of what their trucks would look like on site because one of the big things is what am I looking at? If I can approach, I'll just pass them to you. So what I'd like to tell you is what they're not going to do on site. There's going to be no storage of materials on site. In response to a question from the abutter, the furlongs who are next door, there's no gasoline storage on site, nor do they have any plans to put any sort of gasoline tank or pump on site. They would have the regular motor oil to change the oil in their machines. And one of the other questions that came up is chemicals. They don't, they don't provide fertilizer and lime and that thing. It's more of a niche business now where companies come out and take care of that. So they're not going to be storing up bags and bags of fertilizer, lime and things of that nature within the premises. And I want to address that for the neighborhood. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We canvassed the neighborhood and passed out a letter which, to ask them on March 2nd if they wanted to meet on March 9th. Two of the neighbors from school lane, two couples from school lane did attend the meeting. And they were in support of it. If they're here, they can certainly address that themselves. But what we're proposing to do is to put their business office there with their trucks. And we don't want to hide anything. We want to show you what the trucks would look like on site. Those pictures were made available to the neighborhood and they'll be there a couple times a day. As, as to the site itself, they're increasing the landscaping significantly. They're putting a substantial planting bed in the front on Mount Auburn Street. And there's a, there's a landscape plan that's been provided to you, which should be in color. And so there's a substantial bed in front of Mount Auburn Street, which is going to be perennials. There will, there'll be two trees in there. There's a tree on the other corner of the site on Mount Auburn Street. Coming down along School Lane, there would be another planting bed. And against the abutters fence, they're going to plant a series of abrevites for more screening to the property. They're removing pavement, so their open space increases from 5.5 to about 9.5 percent. So they're increasing it almost 100 percent. Their impervious coverage is, it was all asphalt now essentially, is increasing from about 5.5 to 15 percent. So they're doing what they can to make the site more friendly, but they would need it. It's their own use. They're not leasing it to anyone. It'll be them. They've been in business for over 20 years. They've never had any issues wherever they've been. So they're looking to, they're the owners now of the site and they'd like to use it for their purposes.
Who owns the site right now?
They, it's, it's their entity called Kelly Land Trust Inc., but they're the principals. And they're also the principals of Kelly Brothers Landscaping. So it's technically a corporation that owns the site.
Did what?
It's technically a corporation which owns the site.
So is there a staff report?
Sure. So as Mr. Lightner identified, the site had previous use as a garage shop. Staff did take a look at the site and it's, you know, 6,375 square feet. And the garage and shop were built first as a gas station in 1935. In permitting history, the 1930 zoning map, which was the first zoning map for the area, identified this as a business district, which was the only commercial type of district we had at the time. In 1971, they introduced the concept of limited business, which is what we still have today. In 1989, subsequent to the, what's called the growth management plan, there was rezoning of the residential housing to the rear in this one property on Mount Auburn Street. The adjacent property to the east remained industrial and the adjacent properties to the west remained commercial in nature. Two previous applications have been submitted. One in 1982 for a fast food establishment for a Mr. Donuts. And that was denied by the zoning board. And subsequent to the downzoning to the T-zone, the first one, Mr. Donuts was actually under the original commercial zone. In 1998, there was a request to change it to a market slash restaurant with takeout, which was also denied. The plans did rely heavily on the adjacent private way. And so those two projects were denied. From a perspective of plan consistency, this is a continued use of a commercial facility that's supporting a small business along the Mount Auburn Street corridor. It's adjacent and would use or reuse a commercial site along this corridor. It's, the plan also looks to preserving and maintaining the general character of the neighborhoods. Not that a former gas station needs to necessarily be preserved in every case, but it, but it is a part of the fabric of this area at this time. And so they're proposing to clean it up and reuse it. So it was in, in keeping with the comprehensive plan to that, from that perspective. And a change in use from automotive repair to general commercial office, granted that the current use is a landscaping company's business, but from the, you know, the concept of commercial office is in keeping and supports the commercial corridor. And we're not looking at the specific nature of the use, but looking at it as a, an office with accessory parking. And then from a special permit finding perspective, which is what this is, is staff reviewed and actually worked with the applicant on some of the materials to work on existing non-conformities and improve those as, as much as feasible to help reduce the impacts. And so they, they've incorporated a pervious area of the site to be compliant with the ordinance for the T-zone, which is 15 percent. And part of that is pavers and then part of that is the landscaped beds. The landscaping is being more than doubled in size and is going to be conditioned and designed to allow water to run into the landscaped beds rather than do sheet flow into the, into the street as the current site has. And so the staff suggested that the beds be lowered rather than raised and have no barrier between the paved areas and the beds to allow better stormwater control on the site. There's a granite marker which is indicated on the plot plans and it looks to be on the site, but is actually within the right-of-way. DPW suggested that if, if that needs to be moved, it should be, if there's a need as part of the right-of-way work, as part of the Mount Auburn Street corridor. And there is another marker that seems to match it on the other side of the main driveway. So staff suggested that that could be moved to match, the two granite markers could be used to flank the main driveway. And there was a condition in there as well in regard to that. Staff worked with the project to come up with planting that would help create a barrier and a screen from both Mount Auburn Street so that it didn't appear as a large paved parking lot only. And also from the adjacent single family, they also met with the single family use. And they had, the use, the use had suggested they didn't want overly large plantings along that rear property line, even though staff originally suggested larger, a larger, more continuous screen wall there. And so that, they worked with them on that. There is a commercial, there is a storage area for their trash and they're proposing within the landscape plan to install a gate. Staff recommended a condition to identify the details of the gate prior to installation by staff. And then one point that I, I think within site management, because they described not storing materials on the site, staff did not include that in the conditions, but I would suggest that just to be clear, that be moved forward and added to number five, that no storage of materials on site be allowed. Just to be clear, there's a condition that speaks specifically to storage of materials on the trailers or in the trucks, but it doesn't speak to that. So I would just add that as a clarification. And that's the staff report. Thank you.
So we don't have visuals of this, do we?
No.
And why is that?
The computer, I just don't have any.
So this indicates what, 11 parking spaces? Yeah. So some of these trucks are double-linked. So I read this a couple days ago. What's, how many vehicles are on the site at night?
If you, if you're looking at the southeasterly corner where the eight spaces are in tandem, there are going to be four trucks there.
I see.
Okay. And I, and you have a picture showing the four trucks. Three of them at different points may have beds, trailers behind them. Not the trailers you see on, on big trucks pulling machinery, but with the lawn mowers and things of that nature.
So is the board have questions?
But just to follow up on that, they're not storing, they're not going to have a trailer with a backhoe or anything of that nature. The trucks are just going to have, you see them around town, the little landscape trailers.
And what happens to the gasoline tanks that are there?
The gasoline tanks that are presently there?
Yeah. I mean, there must be some.
No.
It's all a repair shop? There's no?
If it's converted, I don't know when the gas station...
Go on, the gas tanks, go on.
Are you the current owner?
That's Mr. Furlong. He's the abutter. He's the abutter behind there. There are no, there was a 21E of the property. There were no gas tanks on site.
Do you think it would be good to run through Angie's comments and ask if they had objections to them?
Yeah, I, sorry, I did mean to mention that we did receive a comment letter for this site. And it came from Counselor Canelis. And I do think it would be appropriate for the board to talk about the things that she submitted because she clearly wanted the board to have those comments from her.
Okay, I'll, I'll go through the comments that she sent us today.
First off, maximum size and capacity of trucks and trailers that will be allowed on site. should be conditioned.
We provided what we're planning to have, the four trucks, and I think it's a six fifty, it's in the, the, the six fifty, two three fifties, one is a Jeep.
So the parking spaces were identified as eighteen feet? Would, would just, would the board, would a suggestion that they, vehicles being used would have to fit within the parking spaces some?
I think that that would be.
That would be reasonable.
Yeah, I think that none of the trucks shown in the photo would fit in an eight, eight and a half foot width.
No, but we use them in tandem, so you have thirty-six, oh, you were talking about the width.
I'm talking about the width.
Well, that's, that's as laid out presently where the trucks were in the pictures.
Oh, I'm talking about where there are four trucks in a row on the site plan in tandem? I think that three are shown in front of the building in the picture. And then there's eight down here.
On the day the pictures were taken, the mechanic had a car in that space. But that is, that's only going to be a Jeep for that fourth space, correct?
We think, we think this is.
Small pickup is on the fourth space.
Okay, yeah, yeah. But there's the, the building there. Well, I think as Gideon mentioned, if we can condition that the, the final plan shows the, how the existing vehicles will be parked and that there is adequate space.
Yeah. We'd certainly have no problem with conditioning that they wouldn't be parked out of those eight spaces there, parked beyond them. But vehicles change, you know, and I just, to condition on specific vehicles would.
Sure.
We may be back here in a couple of years saying we're going from a two fifty to a three fifty.
Of course. No, I think to say that the vehicles will fit within the space indicated.
I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Okay. Noise associated with the loading and unloading of equipment and supplies during the early morning hours will emanate throughout the area. So something to address hours and noise.
Well, as, as I put in the petition, we're, they're there two times a day. And I know that you can't start a business prior to seven AM. So they're picking up and dropping off. It's a, they're not going to be there other than that. So, you, you know, I, however you propose handling it, I think we can work with you. But they're not looking to loiter and any, the guys want to get in the trucks, get out so they can come back.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So they'd be arriving at about, at seven o'clock?
Seven AM generally, Brendan? Yep, yes. They, they get back when they finish, you know, generally the eight-hour day, four, it's four thirty, five o'clock.
So if you get to a point in the year where the trucks need to be warmed up, none of that would be happening before seven o'clock in the morning?
No.
And just a, oh, just a clarification on that as well. I, we talked, but it's getting into the minutia, but they're planning on backing the trucks in in the afternoon. And so when they're starting them in the morning, they're actually pulling out, moving forward. Is that?
Yes.
Is that correct? And so, because we were specifically worried about, what, any kind of commercial vehicle has the app beeping noise with backing up? I don't know if that's something that you would put in a condition.
That's what you do in the snow. Seems hard to enforce.
It does seem hard to enforce. Plane of car radios and speakers should not be allowed. I get the feeling nobody's going to be hanging around.
No. They are, they're not cutting grass.
Right. So I don't know if, I'm just reading Angie's comments, I'm not making a proposal on this. Employees, five, should be respectful of neighbors while engaged in conversations. And noise associated with preparation of snow removal equipment during overnight hours much, must be reviewed.
Does this, does this group provide snow plowing?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. And we had spoken about that. All the plows will be on the vehicles at, at the beginning, so no plow, the beginning of the, the winter season. They don't come out during the winter. They'll just be parked there. But they'll put the plows on in advance, so when it does snow, they can just not back out, pull right out with their plows and go do what they have to do.
So that obviously would be a, that would be an exception to the seven o'clock. Obviously if it snows in the middle of the night, they're going to go in the middle of the night and get in the car, truck and go.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. She questions the status of low-level security lighting, building security cameras, et cetera.
Oh, two, two things about that. We don't, they've, since they've purchased the building, they've put a lot of time and money into it and they'll continue to do so. They want to draw as little attention to the building as possible for the neighborhood as opposed to illuminating it. It, you know, at the end of the day, they wanted to meld more into the residential neighborhood and not have light saying, here we are.
Especially since they're not open. Yeah, I, I, just bringing it up, okay. Location of the quote, gate to the area designated for trash is unclear.
If you look at the plan, it's hard, the plan's small, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I see it. I don't see that there's a gate or that there's screening, but I see that it's two modest toders that are, it's not a dumpster.
No, they don't have, they go to the dump with, for the refuse.
Right. So on-site, I just see a trash and a recycle tote, like, like a house.
Yeah, there is a gate noted, Janet, in that.
That's on the landscape plan.
It's kind of hard to see what says swing gate eight feet wide.
Oh, yeah, gotcha.
There's a gate there. And it'll just, it'll have the slats.
Yes, it's going to be screened.
And we conditioned it to.
We can condition that being screened.
So it might be that we would request it to be a wooden cover instead of a chain link?
Yep.
That's often what we suggest for the trash storage areas so that it doesn't look as.
And you can't see anything from the rear because of the furlong fence behind it, there's about a four-foot section.
Toters, we covered that. You don't have commercial trash pickup. You're not going to have overnight deliveries. No material stored on-site, that's already in.
Just, number six, just to be clear, commercial trash pickup is, their toders are, would have to be picked up by a commercial operator? So that's what I think she meant, just to.
Okay.
And, and sometimes we have conditions, but it's more common with the residential projects because all commercial businesses have to have a commercial pickup.
And they would pick up after seven as well?
Yes. We can condition that. That's, they're not going to have, they're not going to generate much trash there.
Yeah. No material stored on-site, we got that. And general upgrading inclusive of painting, cleaning of the building and property would be appreciated. We don't get, have much detail in that, but we get the feeling that it's part of the plan.
That is part of their plan, yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, just for the record, these are.
Thank you.
Comments that were submitted to us. I, I don't have any further comments myself.
Thanks. I, I do have one question. I want to understand the logistics of, of this sort of changeover in the morning and the evening because, as I understand it, so they, they first need to move the cars, no, sorry, in the morning, move the trucks out of the way so that the cars can park in the spaces.
Not necessar- not necessarily. There are eleven spaces there, three are in front of the garage door. The truck, the truck's going to be parked on the eight spaces in the back in the south easterly corner. So a lot of the, their employees take the bus. So they may not have a car. I don't believe there'll be over three cars. But they park in those spaces in the front, then the trucks go out and they go on for the day.
So how many employees are there again?
They're presently five.
Five?
Yeah.
And they don't all drive vehicles to work?
Not at present. They, my understanding is they're excited because it's on the bus line. So it makes it a little bit easier for them.
Okay. I mean, my, as you might imagine, my concern is like if there was turnover like that every morning and every evening, there'd be cars double-parked or, I don't know, on the street, on the road somewhere, but.
Yeah, no, there's not, no.
That's not it. That won't happen. Okay, that's all the questions.
And if there, if there are more than the three cars, as a truck pulls out, a car will pull into that space.
So they'd sit in front of the office area?
Correct.
Walk over, get the truck, pull it out?
Mm-hmm.
And then get the truck ready and then pull the car in, is that?
Yes.
So is he saying that all the trucks are here?
Yes. That was actually my question too. Are the four trucks or three trucks and a Jeep there going to be parked there? Is that the sum total of the, of this operations fleet? Or do they have a larger fleet in another yard somewhere else in town or in another town?
They have a bigger truck that they park offsite that's not going to be here. And then they have another dump, dump truck that Brendan Kelly's going to use for his own purposes while he works in the office. But it's not going to be kept on-site.
Anything else?
No, I, I think, you know, the landscaping will be an improvement. I think we'll, in terms of the use, I think we've covered a lot of the operational questions that I had.
And it's, it's a hard site, that's why we canvassed the neighborhood to see what the neighbors had to think about it.
Now, I have a feeling about this which is different than my colleagues. This location, because it, it has no visitors essentially, could be anywhere. Could be anywhere, okay? So why is it on our, one of our main boulevards? This is a chance to change that site into something different. So I'm not keen on this particular use. I don't think it, you know, I just don't think it's appropriate to have a bunch of trucks parked in front of, so that's how I feel about it and I would therefore vote negatively.
Okay. But to, to respond to that, it's, and it's a T-zone, so the site is somewhat limited. If there were more time, ultimately, you'd probably want to re, this is the only parcel from, coming down from Cambridge on that side of the road that is not an LB. So their uses are somewhat limited presently. Given a perfect situation, they, you change the zoning to an LB, so it'd open up different opportunities for that parcel. And the owner would not be there because it's something with a better economic use would come along. It hasn't at this time. You know, we were, I was talking to the abutter, he said, geez, a six-story building would look great there. And I'm sure it would. But the, the time and the expense to get that approved at this juncture is prohibitive. So is this going to be the end result? I don't believe so. I think hopefully their business grows and they leave this site and they have time to take a step back. They bought it in August and develop it. They have to leave their site in Cambridge. But ultimately, there will be a higher economic use for this property. But presently, this is what, what the economics for them require.
Is the repair shop still running?
Yes.
Yeah. And so I, I missed something. Who owns that now? You all own it?
No, the petitioner owns it.
You?
Yes, someone, someone runs it.
As an intended new owner? You're with the landscape operation?
No, they own it. The landscape company owns it.
Yeah. Okay. Anyway.
I, I understand your point.
Yeah.
And that repair business that's there now will cease?
Correct.
And assuming it's approved, that would cease and then Kelly Brothers Landscaping would move into the site.
That's correct.
So any comments, questions from the audience? Sir?
I don't really have a question. I appreciate telling me that you, I suppose.
You need to identify yourself, please.
My name is Frank Furlong. I live at Seven School Lane. I abut the property. I'm on School Lane, there on Mount Auburn Street. My single home is just right behind the building. The Kelly Brothers visited me years, a while back, told me they wanted to move into the, the site and.
Can you all hear him? You're so, you're a little loud.
Can you hear me?
You're too loud, yeah.
Oh, okay, about now.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
They wanted to move into the site and they were very forthcoming. They were, answered my questions. And we, living there, have gone through a few tenants coming in and out and a few owners coming in and out through the years. So we've had an opportunity to get involved in a lot of situations. The Kellys presented themselves in a great manner. They seem to be very upstanding. They paid a lot of money for building and more power to them. If they could pass all your criteria, we welcome them as a neighbor. They seem to have rounded the bases with me on all the problems that I think they might create. There are situations that I would realize would fall through the cracks as time goes on. They, I mean, whether a truck starts five minutes earlier or five minutes later, we can probably work with that. I, I must compliment the team, the lawyer and the Kellys for being so forthcoming. At least they come up and presented their case to me and I have no reason to believe they weren't honest about it. And so therefore, I'm looking forward to seeing them, if they can pass all your criteria and so forth and get that parking and everything squared away. I'll look forward to having them as a, a neighbor. Thank you, I don't know. I worked there years ago.
You what?
I worked there.
I see.
When I was a kid. I changed tires in those days, flats came every week. I changed flats. And I saw the building. I bought the house on School Lane and the fellow that built all the houses on that street also owned that lot. It was an empty lot. And the woman in my house, when somebody wanted to put a gas station in there, she approved it because the guys were playing baseball or something on the lot, she didn't like them. So she approved the gas station. And I'd been there, bought it from her and I've been there ever since. And we've had a lot of different neighbors. I, I think these guys will be one of the best neighbors we've had. Thank you.
Anybody else? I expected there'd be a little more conversation here. So you guys are with the landscape operation?
That's Brendan Kelly, who's the principal of Kelly Land Trust and Kelly Brothers Landscaping. That's his son Dominic.
Yeah, okay. Have we covered everything we need to? Any else we need to know?
I hope so. I hope we changed your minds.
So are we ready for the recommendations? This has to go to the zoning board?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, I understand the, the complications of the zoning and ordinarily, I would not expect a site like that and a location like that to be what you're proposing, but I understand where you're coming from, that that's what the zoning is calling for and it would be a difficult, lengthy process to change that, but maybe someday. So I move that the planning board recommends to the zoning board of appeals the conditional approval of the requested special permit finding under section point, section four point oh six A for the change in use from one non-conforming use as a repair facility to another non-conforming commercial office use as it meets the criteria set forth in the Watertown zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
We're going to have those conditions too, so we should probably add those to the motion as well, adding those two conditions about vehicles will fit in the spaces and then most of the materials.
Yes, yes.
And, and the fence?
And the fence, yeah.
So is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. So three to one. So there we are. So you go to the zoning board in two weeks? Yeah. So we have a continued case here. You didn't just come to hear all this conversation. Fifty-two, fifty-four, Channing Road?
I represent the petitioner.
You're everywhere.
Yeah. But we'd like to continue the matter, ultimately to withdraw the matter and work with staff to bring it to compliance without zoning.
Say that again?
We would like to continue the matter.
You would?
Yes.
And not do it tonight?
What's that, not do it tonight, no?
The next month?
He'd like to continue the matter and then try to work with staff and then withdraw.
Yes.
But he, would you be continuing it if you don't withdraw until next month?
Well, you would, planning staff suggested continuing it for two months so you don't have an agenda for next month, which I'm fine with. But ultimately, it's my advice to withdraw the matter and work with permitting as of right.
Okay.
There is no power. Never will.
No, no, no. No, 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 no.
We're confused. Can you?
I can, I can talk to you separately as well. I think I, I've talked to some of today, but not maybe any of you. Um, so, so they're requesting a continuance.
For two months.
For two months. It's up to you to decide if you'd like to do that or, because it is a, ultimately, it's a zoning board project. Uh, it has to go to the zoning board, and it's a code compliance case as well.
No, I think they should come back here in two months. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. So you have to make a motion and.
Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay.
I move that this case be continued for two months?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Uh, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We would like to speak.
Oh, sorry. Speak.
Actually, um, as part of the public hearing.
Yeah, they don't need to.
They don't, they wouldn't, it wouldn't, because they're not going to actually open the case and talk about it. You're, you can provide, so that's why I wanted to give you my card, and I'm staff, so you can talk to me about the project or about what, and we've been receiving your comments. Some of, I don't know which of you have sent them, but we've shared them with the board as well. So they've seen what you've written. Um, and I can give you my business card as well so that you can reach out to me. And I can also, after the meeting, I can talk to you briefly about the status and what the concept and what's happened in the past. Sorry, it's confusing, but the hearing versus the.
So assuming we have no other business? We are in adjournment. Strange meeting.
So?
Nothing next month?
Nothing, right?
Yeah, they said nothing extensive.
I almost missed two.
I didn't.
So this is the first time we've had no visuals.